I think, as Commissioner Lux has mentioned, there could be more consistency in how they operate. But at the very base of things, I think it's a great system that really engages people and really makes the city better.
Thank you very much. And colleagues, I'd respectfully ask for your I-vote on both nominations.
Thank you. We've got a number of speakers, starting with Mr. Rosendahl, followed by Mr. Labange, Mr. Zine, and Mr. Reyes. Mr. Rosendahl?
Thank you, Mr. President. Good morning. Linda Lux, I've got to tell you, being very close to Venice, I used to live in Venice, and knowing your garden tour, which has been a huge success, has brought in significant funds and helped a lot of people, plus it gave Venice a real uplift in itself and sense of pride. So I thank you for your historic commitment to Venice. I also want to thank you for the process in Venice that turns out 1,100 people in your -- 1,200 in your last election. I dare say that's probably a record in the city, I just don't know. But that kind of citizen engagement is what neighborhood councils are all about. So you've demonstrated it on many levels, your ability to do that. One issue right now the Mar Vista Neighborhood Council is having, and I just talked to BH about it, I don't know what we can do, hopefully we can do this, is they're up for election next year, that's how they got elected, some want to get out, others want to come in, instead of extending it further because of the clerks and the money and all this kind of thing. What they have proposed to me is, we will provide the volunteers, and I've got to say, Mar Vista is a straight-shooting, clean, wonderful neighborhood council, everybody's engaged in that community, and that they would maybe have one or two people from the clerk's office to oversee it. It would dramatically cheapen the cost of it, it wouldn't be a big deal, but yet it would be in terms with how the constituents feel. BH said, he said, "We need to do a charter amendment." Amendment, I said, "Craft it, I want to get it around here, I'd like to do it." Your thoughts about the election process?
I think the way the city clerk ran the elections last time was terrific, we had no problems in Venice, we were pleased. However, what we understand is that the cost of the city clerk continuing to do it is a real issue, and my board doesn't want to pay the $13,000 that was proposed. We're willing to take it back and do it ourselves, although I don't think we should be in that business, but we don't want to serve for four-year terms, that's not what we were elected to do. So we are looking at alternatives, we're open to working with the city council on alternatives that will let us have elections one way or the other before 2014. So whether that be do-it-ourselves, the way we used to with an independent election person, or the city clerk for cheaper, or the city pay for it, but we need to have elections before 2014. I think we didn't object too much when it was studied for a year, I think people could live with that, but now that 2014 is vanning about that, I'm hearing all over the city that this is not okay, this is not what we signed up for. So I'm, hopefully, will come up with some alternative way to hold, let neighborhood councils have elections sooner than later.
I appreciate that. Ms. Kocorian, of course, heard that, and I know he's engaged in that issue, so we look forward to that kind of thing. Again, thank you for stepping up to the plate. Any advice to folks who are parts of neighborhood councils across the city of how to engage community in some of the things you've done? I'd love to hear it.
Outreach, outreach, outreach. I think the people that, the neighborhood councils that didn't get a lot of turnout, didn't put money into recruiting candidates, which is what we did, 39 candidates, and also putting money into the outreach. I'm hoping we don't have to put it into running the elections too, but we put $5,000 into getting outreach, and that's, I think, another reason why we had so many. So outreach is the key to that.
Great, and thank you for your public service. You're a great public servant, we appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rosendahl. Mr. Zine is our next speaker.
Thank you, good morning.
Good morning.
1,200, that's some, that's more votes than some people get in a council election. Congratulations.
Thanks.
And I've served on the committee with my colleague, who was the chair, Mr. Kocorian, representing the southwest San Fernando Valley. We have some issues with some of the neighborhood councils getting along. I know when Rabbi Freiling was here, he tried to establish civility. Somehow, from the commission level, needs to emphasize to the folks on the neighborhood councils that they're there working for the people, as we're working for the people. And I know the frustration that some of them feel, that they don't really seem to get that energy level to make the changes that they want. Sometimes there's frustration, where they want to do something or block something, they have advisory capacity, and they don't want something that the community wants, that the council wishes to vote on. And I think that maybe separation of powers and that understanding of their role and what the requirements are, and above all, civility.
Oh, yeah.
That they can't scream at each other and cause problems, as we've seen in some of the neighborhood councils. Now mine are doing well, but I know we've had some problems in some of the neighborhood councils throughout the city, some of the activities that can place. You've got the general manager that works diligently to try to keep it all juggling with a reduced staff, but I was just, hopefully, encouraged the commission to maybe take a more active role when it comes to the goal and the objectives of the neighborhood councils, and that they have limited authority, we have limited authority, we all have to work within those boundaries. And while they have the Brown Act and they have all the different requirements, they are a representative arm of government, they do receive funding from the taxpayers, but I think some of the bickering that takes place and some of the hostility and the resentment, sometimes the frustration, which we experience here, but we just accept that as a part of this responsibility. But from the commission level, because I know you have your meetings, but some kind of outreach to them. And we're a diverse city, as Mr. Park knows, we're diverse throughout this entire region, and you get sometimes conflicting communities.
Right.
That have to serve and work together, along with the 15 council officers. So I applaud your willingness to do this, I know you've done well on the West Side. Mr. Park, you're coming new to this, so it'll be an experience, sometimes frustrating, but we established the commission and we established the neighborhood councils, it was for a purpose of bringing people closer together. While Ms. Hahn was here, she was one of my colleagues, we were part of the commission that established it, we just want to see it work and continue to work. It's been around for 10 years plus, so we want to make sure that it completes the task. But if you can get through some of that, shall we say, issues.
Yes.
That really need to get resolved. But your general manager does try to do it, and I don't think your staff's going to be increased, so maybe a lot of it rely on your direction, your leadership, and taking this challenge forward.
Thank you.
So thank you both for volunteering for this task that you received, no compensation, just the goodwill of the people of Los Angeles. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Zine. Mr. Reyes?
Thank you, Council President. First, I want to say thank you for your hard work. And I have one of my bosses at the table, one of my constituents, so good to have you. But I wanted to, this is a topic that I've been engaging since 2001 with the charter change and all the different experiences, as we see this evolvement, this grand experiment in democracy, as you've described. And about year three, four, five, in that period, there was a great study by USC that broke down the notion of democracy and whose voice is being heard. And they looked at the makeup of the boards.
Diversity.
And you look at the makeup of the boards, and you look at the makeup of the city, it wasn't really a strong reflection or a reflection of what the city looks like.
Right.
And there was a breakdown in, based on the study's conclusions, the notion of communication was important, like whose voice are we hearing? Given an international metropolis like Los Angeles, every major population from throughout the world, their second home is here, Filipino, all the way down the line, Korean, Mexican, Central American, but on the board, if you were to look at the board, you wouldn't have known that. So I guess as commissioners who've been around the block or are familiar with these kinds of dynamics that makes this such a great city, a city of immigrants, how do you see the next steps? I mean, how, what kind of energy do you bring to try to address this communication gap? And I'm not saying that immigrants are not relevant, I'm not saying that. What I'm saying is that how do we increase understanding, how do we increase the voices that are not heard in these very significant structures we call neighborhood councils?
You mind me to start?
Sure.
I think, again, going back to.
Would you mind moving the microphone closer?
Yes, sorry. Going back to outreach, and I think the current composition of this commission and with Mr. Park, part of it, well, diversity comes up at every meeting, how do we increase diversity? Our board looks like the city, we are a diverse board, we're the model, but we have to let the neighborhood councils know they have to cast a wider net, they have, they don't have a choice, and how we get there, I don't know, but it's certainly on our mind in how we do that. Every time we pass an ordinance or pass a recommendation, we do use the word diversity, it's a question of education and letting people know how they can do that, that they must do that, to have credibility with you. I mean, if it's an all-white board of homeowners, I'm sorry, it doesn't reflect necessarily that community. And that if they understand that they have to be considered credible, they need to be reflective, and I think it's a long process that you need to tell them, that we need to keep reiterating, and it's a process not going to happen overnight, because people are fearful of the other, they didn't want the factual basis stakeholder. We support that with wanting you to do, define it a little bit further, because it includes more people at the table, which was the content, but we don't want to have takeovers either. So there's a way that we came up with that we recommended to you, to allow to require some, but not too many, because it wasn't properly defined. But there's many ways that we can move forward in looking at bringing more people to the table, that's the whole point. So that's.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Labange. Sorry, Mr. Park, go ahead, and then we'll hear from Mr. Labange.
Just real briefly, I think Commissioner Lux has her finger on the key, which is outreach. It's a commitment, both financially as well as feet on the ground, to outreach, to ensure that communities within the neighborhood councils, all communities are represented. And you have to make a compelling case to the people that you're reaching out to, that this is something that affects them, that they care about, that affects their businesses, their homes, the city services that are crucial to their everyday lives, and that these councils have a say and have power to affect policies that affect their lives.
Just in closing, I just want to say thank you for those thoughts, and some of the basic elements that can be introduced. And one group I know provided childcare, and that allowed a lot of the men and women who don't have childcare to bring their children to the meeting. Another element was senior care, people that, when they have the meetings in the late evenings or right after work or school, if they can provide care for the senior animal or the child, you'll have a wider audience, and that net might be that much, much stronger. But thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Reyes. Mr. Labange?
Thank you both for your service. And I look at things sometimes, on an issue in a neighborhood, I really look at the people who are on the block, almost first before anybody else, and then I sometimes look at the neighborhood association that has a predated history as we go on there, and then the neighborhood council as it works out. What is the role of the neighborhood council in the city of Los Angeles? If you could give me that explanation?
Of the neighborhood council? It's to be another voice, to present to you, the city council, the will of their community, it's sort of an interim step, if some people don't have the skills to deal.
Right.
The city council, so if we can help them and sort of congeal opinion of the neighborhood council or of the community on an issue and present that to you.
Right. And the Southern California Association of Governments, they have Area COGS, which is a council of governments. Do you have regional neighborhood council meetings?
Well, there are regional, the MOON movement is the regional council. There are regional councils popping up everywhere, and they have a real role in looking at regional issues, not individual local issues, but taking regional issues that the local neighborhood council may not, you know, have the time to go outside their own little world.
Right.
And they're working, some of the models, I think, are better organized than others. The West Side, which was the one I'm most familiar with, we designate the person that represents us, and the regional alliance cannot vote on anything before taking it back to our council to buy in. It's mostly the presidents of the neighborhood councils and their alternates, but I think that's the way to go in the future, at least on regional levels to get.
Yeah, if you could encourage more of that, because I think time is so important when people get together, like four times a year, some of this nation here.
Meeting out, yeah.
And also, I think there's a great opportunity with the new structure that Mr. Garcetti, our president, created, with Mr. Kocorian as the chairs of arts at parks and neighborhoods. Because often it's, people get driven to their community involvement through a neighborhood issue, like a park, like a library, like public safety issues. So Mr. Kocorian's going to do an excellent job, I just want to stand, for in the moment of transitioning this, and will be great for all, because some of the council members got upset that they lost their committee. The more you join hands, the stronger you are, and I think it will be a greater voice for you as it develops. I thank you both for your service to Los Angeles, I do support the COGS concept for regionalism for our neighborhood councils, but I think you said it so correctly, to advise the city council. Sometimes they advise is not reached as often as they could. One of our challenges, I have 12 neighborhood councils in the district that I represent, to have all come to meeting, and the tax, the time taxed by city staff can't get to everybody. So to coordinate, I'm looking for your general manager, who was here earlier, to coordinate the calendar so that there can be more advantage, information as knowledge as power.
Right. Can I, may I just comment on that for a second? One of the things that we get frustrated is that we don't have enough advance notice, because we meet once a month, so to get us calendar to committee, to get it to, we need as much help from your offices to get us, you know, a two-month lead at least before something's coming before you, so we have an opportunity to properly calendar it and consider it, talk about it, and take a position. Sometimes we find out the week before, and then we scurry around and have to have a special meeting.
But I think there should be a master date list, so you could look at the neighborhood council, Department of Neighborhood Councils, and if you tell the general manager, these are dates that these people meet, so we know not to go, you know, and try to organize a community function. And then sometimes there's urgent things that come up, but we'll work to it, because we have a commitment, there's nothing like Los Angeles, there's nothing like the neighborhoods of Los Angeles. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other members wish to be heard? Not want to thank the nominees for their willingness to serve and for their answers to those questions, and we'll go ahead and take a vote.
Mr. President, pardon me, I believe there are speakers.
After we have our cards. John, you're one step ahead of me. John Walsh is our first speaker on 18, then Craig Jones will follow him, and then we will hear from Mr. Walsh on item 19 as well. If you'd like to do both at the same time, Mr. Walsh, that's fine as well.
No, separately. One minute each. I'll show you under public comment, controversial picture we have up here, we have a new post-up. This person is replacing Al Abrams, and I know on the neighborhood council, commission, I know you will do a much better job than Al Abrams, because I'm sure that you do not have inside of you a talking tumor that tells you to watch kiddie porn. Now, that's what Al Abrams has said, and it's really shameful that this city council has not addressed the issue of psychotics being confirmed 100% by this council. And the FBI will be involved in the talking tumor gate, and where is Al Abrams now? HollywoodHighlands.org, check us now for our new post up this morning.
Thank you. Did you want to take additional minutes on the other nomination? You said a minute for each, but that's just one minute, okay?
Keep it.
All right, thank you, Mr. Walsh. Craig Jones is our next speaker on item 18.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President.
Good morning.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Council, Mr. Parks and Ms. Perry. Yeah, I'm a concerned, community constituent, and I'm really concerned about the neighborhood council, and she was given like this remedy. I'm thinking that the council in which I'm involved with, I don't have no total connection to it, because they're so standoffish, is that there is no ability to critically analyze the problems of the community and then bring about a viable solutions or solutions to those problems. I'm thinking that these neighborhood councils are like independent entities, and I'm thinking that the money has given them power. So I'm living in Mr. Parks' district, I think the neighborhood council functions, it could function in a more efficient and effective way. I don't think it has anything to do with diversity. I'm thinking, when she mentioned the West Side, and she's going to be the commissioner, the West Side don't have, are not confronted with the same problems as South Los Angeles, which is my side. So when it comes to the connection of unifying different entities to make them one, I think it's going to be a problem if we, being in these neighborhood council committees, don't know how to critically analyze or to utilize effective or efficient twos. If we don't do those things, I'm in your district, I do a lot for you, and you brought me out twos, I really thank you. The neighborhood council didn't bring the twos, your office did. I begged them for twos, they didn't do it, you did it. I thank you for that. And we were able to clean up within the community, the trash, you even brought the trash trucks. Trash had been there for like five months, six months, you brought trash trucks and got it all, so we really appreciate your effort, you know, but the neighborhood councils could do better, they could listen to me. I would like to be a part of the council, but I don't want to join anything that's not based on bringing about hope to the community, I don't want to join it, because I've been community repping for like 25 years now, I have plaques and certificates for just being involved with the city of Los Angeles, but I haven't seen the neighborhood council really be effective or efficient.
Thank you very much, Mr. Jones. That will close our public hearing on the commissioners. Let's go ahead and now take our vote. Please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
Congratulations to both of you. Thank you for your service. We will next go to item number 20 and item number 21, our two nominees for El Pueblo, Carol Hockes and Lisa C. Two fine women offering themselves for continuing service, and I'd like to recognize Mr. Labange from Mr. Coretza's seat for our folks in the control booth.
Yeah, Mr. President and members on this side, because I was visiting with Mr. Weezer on issues of the city, and as right next to me is Mr. Kocorian, who will now oversee this committee, but these are two great commissioners who have very strong opinions about what should be done for the right of the history of Los Angeles, and I recommend both for reappointment. And if you would both, Mr., excuse me, Mr. Kocorian went out of the room, but if we could both have a little brief comment, I recommend approval of both.
Thank you.
No, no, please.
Ms. Hockes, go.
Commissioner Hockes.
I'll take the.
When did you ever not want to make a point?
Not often. First of all, I would like to start by thanking Antonio Villarosa, our mayor, for making the recommendation for this appointment. I'd like to thank council member Weezer, council president Eric Garcetti, and all of you for the work that you have done at El Pueblo. I've been there, I think, maybe eight years, and I'm so thankful and so grateful that you have built the bones down there. We have restructured all of the pueblo, all of the puestos, we have gone in and we have done work on the Methodist church, we're about to open on the Sicqueros project, we're going to expand the Chinese-American museum, and soon, we hope to have the Italian-American museum going. And we have approved the Methodist lease, and they're going to be working on creating a museum. That's tremendous. That support that you gave, that infrastructure support, and that work that you've done for El Pueblo is going to take us a very long way into the future, because what we've done is we've built the bones. Now what we have to do is we have to put the meat on it, and we have to honor it like we honor our grandmother, and integrate it into the future, the 21st century, so that our grandmother, El Pueblo, the people that were there, so we can allow her to tell her stories. There are millions of stories that need to be told to the children that are going to come after us. And El Pueblo, by preserving El Pueblo, this jewel of Los Angeles, you honor your grandmother, and you tell these stories to the generations that come after. So I thank you, because never before, and I have lived here all of my life, as has my grandparents, and I've never seen this much work, this much city work done by any city council in investing in the birthplace of Los Angeles. So I come with a very grateful heart for that to all of you.
And I can keep my comments very short, because I would say ditto to all of the thanks, and then ditto to all of the other things that Commissioner Hockes said in terms of all of the work that has been done in the last few years at El Pueblo. I think there was one thing you left out, which was the signing of the leases, which was a huge, huge thing that has taken years and years and years and years, as you all know, and so thank you for all of your help in having that get done.
You are historic in terms of the work you've done, all of you.
Mr. Weezer?
Thank you, Mr. President, and as a council member who oversees this area, I've come to work closely with both of these commercials, commercials, commissioners. And I, they're not selling anything up here, are they? And I highly recommend the reappointment, and, you know, we've done a lot, like you mentioned. I recall a few years ago, and we said we were going to address the merchant leases that have been going on for over a decade, and even some of my colleagues here who've been here longer than some of us, were saying, "There's no way you guys are going to get them done." Every council member in the 14th council district has come by, said they're going to deal with them, and we got them done. And then Carol Hockes, I want to give you particular credit for the Methodist church lease, which we recently got some conceptual points together that will come to council soon, because I give you credit for, as a kindly gesture, you grabbed me by the ear and say, "Pay attention to this issue here, the Methodist church, because we need to make sure we address it and resolve this," and we did it. And I know there's some people here from the Methodist church who, the congregation, who are very happy that we finally come to a conclusion on that issue, and hopefully we'll get it through council before the end of November. And we've done a lot there, and Carol, also on the Sicqueros mural, you've taken the lead on that, to make sure that we preserve that mural, you've started the Friends of Sicqueros along with others, and encourage people to get that going. This commission has been very active, involved, and I want to make sure we continue that work, because we've accomplished a lot, even when there was a lot of naysayers, and there's a lot more to accomplish. As you mentioned, Carol, we've got to preserve this jewel that we have, there's been too much history lost in the city of Los Angeles, and we certainly don't want to lose any more history at our birthplace, which is El Pueblo. So I look forward to working with both of you, there's a lot more work to do ahead, and the little, all the work we've done in the last few years, I think, is the beginning of a new El Pueblo that preserves its history. So thank you so much, and thank you for your fans who are here, or the people who are here to support this. I assume you're here to support this, are you going to? You are, okay. Thank you.
Mr. Garcetti, followed by Mr. Rosendahl.
Pardon me?
Go ahead, if you want to speak.
Well, I can't sit here before you without taking the opportunity to say that there's more work to be done. I give the accolades, but I under, one of the things that is, I think you need to consider very seriously is parking. I think you have to really begin to look at El Pueblo in its entirety, and not just look at, you know, where the ducats are coming in, but you have to look at investments and how it pays off in other areas. For example, when tourists come internationally, especially for the Sicqueros project, but even for Alvera Street, for the future museum that the Methodists are building, they come and they stay in hotels, and they spend money, and that goes to the general fund. We don't have to squeeze all the ducats in order to make, to make that function, because the money is going to come in, because people will come and visit. We have to connect it to La Plaza, we have to connect it to the Broad Museum that's going to come up, we have to connect it to the Disney Hall, we have to connect it to Moca, so that people can take the gold line there and have an experience, because when I go to Europe, I always go to the churches, I always go to the museums, and so if we nurture that, that will come back. What can we do? We can have lower parking rates on evenings and weekends, so that people will go there, that stimulates business. I think that what we can do to help is, we need marketing, marketing, and we have to work together, you know, we have to find ways to survive, we have to find paradigms of survival for the 21st century, and not be utilizing the same old kinds of things that maybe worked, maybe didn't work, but we have to come together to create the synergy that will make this and all of Los Angeles the cultural, art, and historic center of Los Angeles, so that people will want to walk and look and see the history that we have.
Mr. Garcetti?
Thank you, Mr. President. I know we have a lot of business to do, and it would have been easy, I'm pretty sure your votes are going to go through, it would have been easy not to speak, but I wanted to stand and speak about both of these women that are here before us, because we're incredibly lucky in Los Angeles to have you both serving. And Mr. Weezer, thank you for your service, and really. And Mr. Weezer, thank you for your service in really what is the second golden age, hopefully, for Alvera Street and El Pueblo. A time in which we, a vision which was all about uncovering the past, we have to continue to do. And I love the frame that you gave to that because it's really about stories and connections. That's what the street is for all of us. And it's the work that both of you have done. Ms. Hockes, the incredible work that you've done connecting people and as an activist in the community long before being at El Pueblo has been such a fighting voice for what is right and what is just in the city and making sure that we don't forget the past that we have that is not only all around us every day, but is often covered up. And I think the work that you've done as well, Ms. C, is all about that. The stories that you've told, stories that we know existed but never had been imagined in order to give the voice to so many lost stories and for us to be able to find a way in to our own history in order to write the future. Right now, there are some amazing connections that are taking place. I mean, for somebody who visits it, they don't care where the city and the county are. And there's been wonderful work the county is now doing to have content there. The same thing with the city. And one question, one comment and then one question for both of you. The comment is, I think, the new connections that have, that can be made are also to the north and south. We still have, unfortunately, El Pueblo, which is an island by and large. And yet it is, talk about connections, people get off the train and it's one of the first things that they see when they come to Los Angeles. We have a freeway which ripped apart all the founding area of where the Pueblo first started because it did come all the way down to where we are here now. And so as we look, and I know Mr. Weezer, also Ms. Perry, support what we're looking to do in Hollywood where the freeway is below grade. That was an idea that first came from downtown of how we can unify the civic center with El Pueblo, to be able to build a park and make that continuous space for pedestrians and bicyclists and others to connect both halves. To the north, what Mr. Reyes is doing, the connection to the river and where the, you know, cornfields were, and connecting that all the way up to the river through Chinatown. And I know the work that you've done, Lisa, with the Chinatown walks and other things. This is a moment for us also to make this that heart that leads, you know, it's almost like the heart is doing well, but we don't have the arteries flowing out from it in the way that we should. And whatever we can do with that, just if you have any thoughts on what role you can play as commissioners to push for those projects of a freeway cap park, of the connections to the north as Mr. Reyes looks at bringing us back to the river that actually gave us our name, and any other things that are kind of more ambitious as we now have taken care of the details.
Well, I'm going to say the word that's been whispered but hasn't been settled out loud here, and I'm going to be the first one to say it out loud, which is not unusual. I think we need to consider a joint powers authority. A lot of the things that are going on on Grand Avenue and a lot of the, you know, future development that's being looked at is being looked at in terms of joint powers. That's what I mean about looking to the future and finding ways to survive. Sometimes the county and city, like brothers and sisters, don't get along too well. But in this economy and what we're doing right now, we better learn how to get along brothers and sisters and create a real family. We need to connect what I call the turquoise necklace, the turquoise necklace of connecting the river, the work that Councilmember Reyes does, the work that you do in Hollywood. We need to bring those tourists here. I mean, in New York, they call it the Big Apple. We're just, we're LA, you know, we want them to come. And people want to come here. They want to visit. I see the tourists. They come from all around. And we need to focus on what we have, and that is those historic periods, the Native American period, the Spanish period, the Mexican period, and us. But within that is the diversity. We need a celebration of Biddy Mason. We need a celebration of the Irish. We need a celebration of all the people that are here. And Pueblo and these areas are where we can tell those stories and we can celebrate who we are in terms of diversity. I know that middle America is having a little trouble with their diversity, and that's unfortunate because I think we can be an example to them in terms of how we can get along. And I think the city and the county started by working together to create the joint powers authority so we can create the synergy to make the investment in the future and honor our grandmother so she can tell the stories to our grandchildren.
Mr. Rosendahl, followed by Mr. Reyes.
Well, I'm very impressed with you. First time I'm meeting you. It's a pleasure to hear you talk. My constituent in Brentwood, has been there 10 years, started with Mayor Hahn and has moved along. When you reflect on it, I heard you say the leases, yes. Major, major new moment to get that going. Is there any things you think need to be done? I heard the Italian Hall, which all I do is think of Joe Sorel all the time when that is brought up. But I'm just wondering if, in your experience now.
The other things I would like to see done are things also that Commissioner Hockes mentioned, the completion of the expansion of the Chinese-American Museum. We now in Los Angeles have the largest Chinese-American community in the country. And when this museum is completed, it will also be the largest Chinese-American museum in the country. And it deserves to be here for that reason. I would say that the idea of covering the freeway so that you have that entrance into, right into downtown, that would be a terrific thing. But of course, you know, the real thing that we need for that is money and somebody to fund it, who's going to fund it. We have several empty buildings, the Pico House, Merced Theater, and the Old Masonic Hall. And as you know, that has all been in litigation for many years. We'd love to see that wrapped up in the same way that leases were finally wrapped up and put to bed so that we can actually go out and develop that end of the plaza.
Beautiful.
I have some thoughts about how that should happen and what should be in there. And I'm sure that Commissioner Hockes feels the same way, that we would like it to be historic. Whatever goes in there is historically accurate, fits in with El Pueblo. It's not a Starbucks.
Beautiful.
You know, that it feels right for the city, that there is a reason for whatever goes in there, goes in there, and that those people pay the proper rents for that space. Right now, we're getting a lot of rental income from movies and commercials and television shows for those particular buildings. And so whatever comes in has to be able to top that income.
That's awesome. Let me just ask you something about the Chinese Museum, which of course is exciting. We do have the largest Chinese community outside of China in the United States of America. It's awesome. Can we connect somewhat with the Chinese government in a positive way, open, transparent way, and maybe get them to financially help us? I don't want to sound like we Americans got it all or don't have it all, but the Chinese are incredibly engaged these days. And I know the trade between Taiwan and the mainland has dramatically changed some of the politics, not completely changed to my liking in terms of human rights and civil rights. But on the other hand, their engagement in America on many different levels is so significant. Do we see an opportunity and some kind of a partnership with the mainland over having this museum?
Well, that's a, actually, that's a very interesting thought. You know, in China right now, I was just, yesterday? It can't be yesterday. The day before yesterday, I was speaking at Sotheby's on a panel for Asia Week, which is taking place in New York right now. And one of the things that came up is that China right now has the goal to build 1,000 museums in that country. And they are well on their way. They've done about 800 of them in the last couple of years, all around the country. But in your comments, you, I think, brought up the big issue that I would see of why you probably wouldn't want to have money from those governments, which is that the majority of Chinese-Americans here in Southern California are from Hong Kong, Taiwan, pre 1949 in South China. That there still is this great divide between the sort of Taiwan supporters and the mainland China supporters. And that those two still, when you go to a banquet, for example, you can invite one set of people, but maybe not the other set, from the various government entities that are here. That they, so I don't know how that, how people in the community would really feel about funding from either country, actually, because that cuts off the other half.
But I think it's exciting to at least explore that notion of it, as long as we can keep control over it and the thing. And they could win on it. And of course, maybe they could do that whole thing above the freeway and all these other things potentially. Anyhow, just a thought. Thank you both.
Mr. Reyes, followed by Mr. Labange.
Thank you, Council President. I just want to rise and thank the commissioners that are here with us today and all your hard work. Ms. C, I just reminded you a few years ago, that great book that was written on the cultures of this great country and Chinese culture and what it means to grow up as an immigrant and going through the changes of this great country. Ms. Hockes, I'm glad you enunciated what people are whispering, that we are seriously overlooking an amazing opportunity with this concept of joint powers authority. We had this conversation a few weeks ago, maybe a few months ago, and Supervisor Molina had talked about it maybe last year. The Council Weezer and I kind of batted around the concept. But we look at all the asphalt that's out there that the county essentially oversees. And you see Fort Moore just on the other side of Hill Street, which is, used to be a hill there. In 1949, they carved out the hill to put in the freeway. And that hill actually went down to Hill Street where La Colima Restaurant sits. That's the last remnant of that hill. And there used to be a tunnel that went through that hill. All that is gone. But when you connect Union Station with Alvera Street, with the Chinatown Rail Station, you have an amazing triangle that speaks to a gateway in and out of Los Angeles with a beautiful park that could sit over that freeway, but also looking at the mixed-use development that can create revenue to generate a stream of resources that can sustain the Puestos, that can sustain all of the cultural elements, both in Chinatown and in Alvera Street, and the whole range of cultures that have been through that area geographically over the past 200, 300 years. So I think it's about time that we got off the discussion part. And actually, I don't want to impose on my colleague, Council Weezer, but actually look at how the entitlements could be reassessed over these properties that can generate the kind of marketability for investors to consider, just like other cities that do sale lease packs. We control the land as government, but they could venture investment into the air rights and produce the revenue stream that can sustain the projects that we have contemplated for our grandchildren. So I thank you for bringing that out in the open. I hope Supervisor Molina's ears are ringing because I know I think she would be very appreciative of this conversation because we're all looking at our clocks and our timeframes are beginning to wind down and for some of us are beginning, Council Weezer. So you've got a good chunk of time up front of you. And it would be great to see this level of maturation occur with the wisdom and guidance you provided commissioners throughout these years. And for that, I thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Reyes.
May I make a quick comment on this joint powers? You know, it was only when I went in to visit with Councilmember Weezer last week that I had heard about it. And that very day, we had a commission meeting. You weren't there last week, and I brought it up. And no one else had heard of this on our commission. And I think that, I don't want to say people are for it or against it or anything because we don't know anything about it. And I think if we're going to go forward in a positive way on the commission, there needs to be a variety of presentations made to the full commission so that everyone there is fully informed, as are all of the stakeholders. And that this needs to be done in a very transparent way. And until now, this has been something that has been sort of whispered and gossiped about, but that we haven't really heard about it fully on the commission, and I think we really need to. And we would really welcome Councilmember Weezer to come and speak to us about it, Supervisor Molina or one of her representatives, but also, I think, someone who can talk to us about the different ways that these joint powers authorities are put together and different models that are out there, not just one model, but maybe five different models that have been successful in Southern California.
I would, if I may, I would agree with that. And the models that I'm always in favor of are those models that bring the stakeholders to the table. We have a lot of stakeholders there and they have a lot of ideas and they're the ones that are, we're commissioners, you appoint us. Some of us work hard, some of us maybe not so hard. But the stakeholders, they know what they want, they know what they need. What they tell me is they need marketing, they need some relief. We need to honor our museums and they need some relief on parking on evenings and weekends so that people can come. But yes, there has to be input. This is just, I don't think it's been gossiped about. I think people have just begun to, the discussion has just begun. I don't think you've left the commissioners out.
Thank you, Mr.
Well, they haven't heard of it.
Go ahead. We need to move along. We still have two public comment cards.
I'll give them their time because they're great commissioners. But that being said, let's explore all these options, but really see if it's to the benefit. Know that at one time, there was a city-county-state operation there. At one time, there was, which brought about recreational parks and the El Pueblo Authority Department, correct? At one time. But what Mr. Reyes said in cascading from there at Fort Moore and down the hill and the parking lots, maybe there's something. The real thing I want to see like before is Yang Chow next to the Chinese-American Museum and other restaurants that would bring the flow of people and also at some time, diversify a little more. Don't be afraid of what can transpire. Union Station, 100 trains a day go through Union Station, not counting the subway system, the foot traffic. And ask you, Mr. City Attorney, when's the last time you've been to Alvera Street?
It's been a while.
It's been a while. Okay. This is why we have a great City Attorney. We have to connect with the greatest civic center. I owe you lunch there. We have to create a great civic center with our great historic birthplace. Let's look at everything. Let's make our steps forward. And thank you for your service to the city of Los Angeles, both of you.
Mr. Weezer.
Thank you, Mr. President. And to sum it up, I know there's some public comment cards. My goal all along was to first deal with the merchant leases because they have been outstanding. And if we didn't deal with that, we probably couldn't deal with anything else because the merchants and now the other stakeholders wouldn't continue to be supportive of any direction we go to. Secondly, we did the Methodist Church lease. Next, we have to deal with the nonprofit leases. And that, we're going to deal with that as soon as we finish with the Methodist Church lease. And then a discussion, a transparent, open discussion about the joint powers authority, I think, is in order. We haven't, there's no preconceived notion of what we're going to do. People just brought up the idea. But rest assured, this will be an open, transparent process where we discuss the possibilities without saying we're going to do that from the get-go. We're just going to see if it works or if it doesn't work and move forward in a very open and transparent process. But I think the public infrastructure improvements with the Italian Hall, with the Sicqueros mural, with the Puestos that all got upgrades and doing the leases, those were the first phase. Now the governance part is going to be a big second phase for me to see how we move forward. But we're all in this together. We're all leading the charge. Nobody is in front of the JPA. We're all just going to see if it works or not, and we'll see how that goes after we deal with the leases. I think if we don't deal with the leases and we don't have all the stakeholders involved and know who can and can't be there, under what rules, there's no use in going forward because even if we create some governance structure and we don't even know who has the right to be there or not, who's going to be there or not, it makes no sense. So that's kind of my thinking. If I'm wrong, if I'm correct, let me know. But we'll move forward together. Thank you, and thank you for your service, both of you. You've been very helpful in this commission.
We have two public comment cards, John Walsh and John Walsh, 20 and 21.
I'm John Walsh, HollywoodHighlands.org. We have a new post out today. Concerning Ms. C, I have been a friend of her mother's for about 30 years. Just mention John Walsh from the Writers Guild and see the reaction. We were allies. In fact, the only reason writers get any kind of royalty on DVDs was the strike that your mother and I participated in 31 years ago, and she was a leader. So that lasted for several months, turned the city around. Her name is Carolyn C., and she is, of course, a fantastic print writer, and she's still going strong. HollywoodHighlands.org, check us out.
With that, colleagues, on these two commissioners, 2021, open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Congratulations and thank you. Next item, please.
Mr. President.
Mr. President, before moving on, uh, moving out of the section, in, uh, I have an announcement to make, uh, that, uh, addresses items four, five, and six in regards to the proposition to 18 ballot tabulations for those items. The city clerk reports that the weighted value of the supporting ballots exceeds the weighted value of the opposing ballots, and majority protest is not found to exist, and the proposed establishments may be authorized. That would now bring us to, uh, general public comment.
John Walsh blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org. I talked about it. Here is our website. This is a picture, I don't know if you've heard, but you're about to become the Inspector General for the Los Angeles Community College District. Uh, we have Wendy Gruel. She has many roles: wife, mother, controller, mayor candidate, now private eye, private investigator, with our money over at the L.A. Community College District. Why? To clear Art Gastelum, who's been accused. Now, Art Gastelum is a contributor to Wendy Gruel's campaign for mayor. I thought you other two candidates would like to know that. You are now the private eye. Now, what is this picture? The problem is, they appointed a inspector general who had no qualifications, who came in 10th after 11th, and this is a picture exclusively in our website, from her Facebook, of Ms. Christine Maresz at Playboy Mansion with her girlfriend on the stripper pole. That's what we have, uh, she has absolutely no qualifications. And also, if you go to our website, you will find the latest episode of Derky Gate. Remember, the Democratic Party tried to destroy our website? Well, we have revenge. We have destroyed the Democratic Party. Eric Baumann, the chairman, sent me a letter and thousands of others begging for money. This scandal is so big, that Dianne Feinstein may resign as a senator, they're talking about it. When she resigns, the rumor is Jerry Brown will appoint her daughter Kathleen, Judge Kathleen, Kathleen Feinstein. That is the latest rumor, because she may go to jail too, Ms. Feinstein. HollywoodHighlands.org.
Looks like Donna Blakely or Dawn Bakely. Blakely in chambers. Either Dawn or Donna. Not in chambers. Um, as we go to the San Fernando Valley for a couple speakers, Ms. Perry, you have an item?
Mr. Assistant Pro Tem, it's a technical correction, item 7A. If, uh, it's, uh, requested by the city clerk to, to make sure that we, uh, the documents on this business improvement district accurately reflect what we voted on. So if we could just open the roll on that. I don't think it's controversial.
I think the many motion has been circulated, Ms. Perry.
I got it.
We haven't considered it at this point in time, sir. Would you, would you like to suspend general public comment and take up 7A? Or 7, rather?
Let's do that, since we opened it up, before we go to the valley, let's do that. There's been a request by Ms. Perry to do that.
Do you need for me to make a motion to suspend the rules for a second?
No, no. Uh, no, no, uh, it's a request of the president, we can do so.
We just suspend the rules for that, so let's go to 7.
For clarification, uh, item 7 is now before, uh, council. Uh, 7A has been circulated, uh, for your consideration. That's amending motion, Perry, Weeza.
Okay. Any comment, Mr. Clerk, or can we take a vote now?
No, sir, you can, you can take a vote.
Okay. With that, colleagues, open the roll.
Thank you.
Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Thank you.
Thirteen eyes.
All right, thank you, Ms., thank you, Ms. Perry.
Mr. President, would you like to send that matter forthwith?
Yes.
Very good.
And let's go back to public comment. We'll go to the San Fernando Valley, please.
Good morning. I'm here today to talk about my concern over the Chabad North Hollywood construction project. I'm a resident of Sherman Oaks. I live about 500 feet from that project, which is on the corner of Chandler and Ethel Boulevards. As you know, the project was approved by the city council, I believe, last year. The city council decision was clearly motivated by special interest and backroom politicking. Uh, the Court of Appeals has handed down a decision that clearly states that the council acted inappropriately and in violation of their own rules in approving this project. As a result of the appellate court decision, this project will now be remanded back to the city council. My neighbors and I expect that the revision of this project will be a transparent and open process that will actively engage the neighborhood. Last time around, the neighborhood was not consulted or engaged at any point in time. I respectfully ask that the council, and in particular, Councilman Corretts, halt the construction of this project in accordance with the appellate court decision until all parties can meet to resolve this very divisive project. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Jeff Gantman, in the San Fernando Valley, Mr. Gantman.
Thank you. Uh, good morning, council. My name is Jeff Gantman, and I am also a resident of Sherman Oaks, and I'm here today, in addition to Scott, uh, we are representing the West Chandler Neighborhood Boulevard Association. We are in Councilman Corretts's district. As the councilmen and some of you may recall, in June 2009, council took jurisdiction over a development project that was rightly denied by the South Valley Area Planning Commission for being too large for our residential neighborhood. The project in question is Chabad of North Hollywood's expansion project at 13079 Chandler Boulevard. In one of his final acts as a council member, Jack Weiss and this council granted Chabad entitlements to a larger project without following the law and ignoring the proper procedures. As a result of the council's action in June 2009, we filed suit against the city for failing to follow its own rules and the law in dealing with this matter. Fortunately, the truth often prevails, uh, in these matters, and on August 16th, 2011, the California Court of Appeal ruled that the city council did abuse its discretion by failing to proceed in the manner required by law when it granted Chabad entitlements to build their current project. As a result, this matter will be coming back to your chamber. In the meantime, we are urging Councilman Corretts to order Chabad to stop all construction on this project at once and begin to work with the neighborhood to resolve this issue. We expect an open and transparent process. We have never been against Chabad or their desire to have a more comfortable house of worship in our neighborhood. However, the facts in this case are clear. The project is too large, there is insufficient parking, and the ambiguities within the CUP must be fixed and addressed immediately. Reducing the size of this structure will not adversely impact this organization's ability to meet the needs of its congregation. Councilman Corretts, we urge you to take action in this matter now. I'm asking you to show some leadership by stopping this project and help us find a solution for all involved. Thank you very much.
Tess Jones in San Fernando, in Van Nuys. Tess Jones? Good morning.
Good morning. Um, I'm Tess Jones. I'm a member of the West Chandler Boulevard Neighborhood Association. I'm here to also speak about the Chabad of North Hollywood Development, a project that was approved by this city council without any input from the residents. I live adjacent to the development, and from the beginning, neighbors such as myself have voiced their concerns that this building is too large. It was supposed to be a building to accommodate Chabad's current needs, not one that overwhelms the lot and creates numerous difficulties for the surrounding community. The Sherman Oaks Neighborhood Council denied this project, as did the South Valley Area Planning Commission. The neighbors have been forced to take this issue to the courts. Last month, the Court of Appeal issued a ruling on this matter, a decision that clearly states that the city council granted Chabad's entitlements without following their own rules or the law. The court's decision is clear, Chabad's current project is no longer valid. I'm here to say that now, more than ever, is the time for city officials, specifically Councilman Corretts, to get involved. Stop the construction, mediate a solution, and that does not mean wordsmithing, the CUP, and rubber stamping plans. Please show your leadership and get involved. We, the residents, are very interested in working with Councilman, Councilman Corretts's office and him to hear what they can and what they will do to bring our neighborhood together to finally resolve this challenge. Thank you.
Thank you. That closes public comment. Mr. Clerk, shall we continue with the agenda?
Mr. President, that brings us to item number ones, called Special for Cards. Number one, John Walsh, on number one, sir. Oh, I'm sorry. As Mr. Walsh is coming to the speaker's area, Mr. Reyes has a presentation. Mr. Reyes.
Thank you, Council President. Colleagues, we all have, uh, fortune to work with young people, uh, in our offices, and, uh, I had the great experience of working with a young man, who's to my left, his Brandon Matamotos. He goes to UC Irvine, he's majoring in political science, and has been working the floor, going to committees, taking notes, doing summaries, also working with the, uh, our deputy working in media, and it was great to see a perspective from a fresh pair of eyes. I'm just hoping that after this summer, he does not get dissuaded from getting involved in government, uh, as hard as it can be. But Brandon, I want to thank you for your hard work and the state's appreciation of your exemplary efforts and accomplishments, which have been of great value for the first council district, which have helped to further the common goal of making our city a better place in which to live. And I think he will, knowing that his dad grew up in Pico Union and his mom up in the Northeast, Cypress Park, Highland Park. And Brandon, congratulations. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, colleagues.
Thank you. Congratulations to you. Good experience with Councilmember at Reyes's office. Mr. Walsh, please, on number one.
Number one, again, is another alcohol license. John Walsh blogging at HollywoodHighlands, H-I-G-H-L-A-N-D-S dot org, new post up today. Uh, 16437 West Ventura Boulevard. I've never heard a member of the public in 25 years come up here and say there aren't enough places to buy alcohol in my neighborhood. Have any of you heard anybody like that? No.
Thank you, Mr. Zanetti.
You hear us talking about, you're going to give it to them, there'll be more drunk driving. Did you read today's paper about the teenage drunk-driving fatalities rising? Did you read that? But no. This is the way you do it. You give money to the campaign, and they never refuse you. Alcohol Hollywood is what we call Hollywood. And the crime rate and, but you know what? Nobody here is listening, and I don't give a damn, because I get 1.2 million hits on our website. Go check out, this is on Mickey's pointed blog, you will see the Inspector General of, uh, LA CCD with her girlfriend at Playboy's Mansion getting drunk and fooling around.
On that matter, open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Twelve eyes.
Next item, please.
Mr. President, that brings us to item number 17, called Special for Councilmember Labonge.
And Mr. Walsh, on number 17.
Number 17, we, uh, this is cultural heritage. You know, you spend billions of dollars, and you have demonized automobiles, but suddenly, only in L.A. do we declare an old, broken-down gas station as a cultural monument. This is a monument. Go out there, folks, 4550 West Beverly Boulevard, take your children, it's beautiful. This is all, this is how you spend and waste your time. HollywoodHighlands.org. People tell me that the website is jammed now, you might have to wait a while to get in. HollywoodHighlands.org, new posting. Thank you. Bye.
Mr. Labonge.
Members, I'm asking this to be sent back to committee. It is a, uh, non-restored, old Texaco gas station. If they're committed to restoring it, I'll be back here with the application to ask for your vote, but now, let's not declare a monument of something that is not restored. Let's have it reviewed and have it restored. If they're committed to making it restored, let's do it, but they're not. I ask it returned to committee.
So without opposition, send it to committee. Open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Twelve eyes.
Very well, Mr. Labonge, back to committee. Next item, please.
Mr. President, for clarification, that will go back to the Planning and Land Use Management Committee.
Yes.
Very good.
And our next item, please.
Council has motions for posting and referral.
Post and referred?
The desk is clear.
Announcements, colleagues. Mr. Weeza? Mr. Labonge? Mr. Reyes? Anybody with announcements? It's announcement time.
Meeting's over.
Pardon me?
I announced the meeting's over.
Well, we're almost there. Mr. Parks? Any announcements? No one has announcements? Colleagues, adjourning motions? We have adjourning motions, please stand. Everyone, please stand for adjourning motions, and we'll start with Mr. Reyes. Mr. Reyes, adjourning motion.
Thank you, Council President. Um, colleagues, I'd like to, to, um, adjourn the memory of, 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 uh, Artemio Fernandez, who passed away on Sunday, August 28th, 2011, from a cardiac arrest. This was unexpected and a huge loss for his family. Artemio Fernandez was born on October 20th, 1932, in Mexico. He obtained his pilot's license and worked fumigating agricultural fields in order to obtain flying time. After several years, Artemio became a pilot for Idol Mexico Airlines, where he enjoyed a successful career as a pilot. After retirement, Artemio returned to school to obtain his architect's license and enjoyed building and remodeling houses in Southern California. Artemio married Teresa Fernandez. He had three sons, Francisco, Eduardo, and Roger. Artemio relocated his family to Los Angeles in California in 1972. Artemio was loved by all the people who knew him. He was a very caring individual and always willing to help out any way he could. Artemio would be missed by his family and all who knew him. Artemio is the father of our own Roger Fernandez, who many of us know through his work as a consulatism for ITA. Our deepest sympathies go out to Roger and his family. Please, all members on this one? Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, all members. Any other adjourning motions, colleagues? See, no adjourning motions. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll. This concludes this meeting of the Los Angeles City Council-
11:37.
-at 11:37, and we will resume on Friday. Have a good day, Los Angeles.